Next item, please.
The next item is special reports. We have the Bully Prevention Committee update. All right, I'll let them introduce themselves.
Thanks, David. Good evening, everyone. My, oh. My name is Anef Sarini. I'm a facilitator for the district. I focus on community engagement and really fostering positive environments for our students. And I facilitated the district's Bully Prevention Committee. I'm joined here today with some of our committee members and some of our committee members, Trustee Barry and Trustee Watts on our board. I'll let them introduce themselves and then we're going to share some updates about the work that the committee did and the recommendations we came up with.
Hello, everyone. Good evening. My name is Yasmeen Sareed. I'm a junior at Etzelford High School.
Hello, I'm Harmony Morales and I'm a senior at Dearborn High School.
Hi, I'm Ms. Altamonte. I'm a teacher at Dearborn High.
Okay, so we're excited to be here on behalf of the Full Bully Prevention Committee to share the great work that the committee engaged in this academic year. The committee was tasked with developing three to five district-level recommendations that were aimed at preventing and decreasing incidents of bullying. Our committee was made up of around 30 members, so this included individuals from across the district community, teachers, students, parents, social workers, principals, occupational therapists, board members, English language developers, central office directors, and more. So we had a pretty diverse committee and diverse representation in the room. We met three times as a committee, so we started meeting in early mid-October and we wrapped up our work in February. Our first meeting really focused on what are some of the bigger challenges and what are some of the opportunities for changing things that are happening? And also, what are some of the things that are going really well when it comes to bully prevention? We consulted with some middle school advisory groups in between, so we had some lovely high schoolers in the room with us for those three meetings. It was a little bit harder to get the younger students in, so we went to them in between meetings to get a little bit of their input, and you'll see that reflected in the recommendations. As a result, the committee is putting forward four recommendations for the district to consider implementing. A lot of really great things came out of the committee that were more building-level strategies, so a lot of great things that were already happening in some of the buildings. So we also developed a resource for building administrators that we'll share. These were things like mix-it-up lunches, so having students pair with somebody they don't know at lunch, or ideas that building administrators could implement, not necessarily district-level things. So we do have that document that we'll be sharing with our principals and assistant principals as a resource. But I will have Yasmeen talk us through the first committee recommendation.
So our committee has been discussing the importance of fostering a culture of respect, understanding, and inclusivity across our schools, and we believe that promoting cultural awareness is a very powerful way to build empathy, strengthen relationships, and prevent bullying. To support this, we're recommending a district-wide Cultural Awareness Day event. This would give us the chance to celebrate the diversity in our school communities and bring together people in a positive and meaningful way. So we've come up with two main options on how this could take shape. First, a cultural awareness day during a designated month or day, similar to how Care to the Core works, or we could even link it with Care to the Core. Each school would receive a main theme, goal, and grade-level activities with the flexibility of catering it to their own school. Second option is a district-wide event where we would have an open celebration of cultures in our community, and this would be organized by a planning committee, and it would be open to the whole district. Our committee feels very strongly that building respect across cultural differences isn't just valuable, but it's also necessary, and events like these can be powerful tools to bring people together, celebrate who we are, and grow stronger together as a district. Thank you.
Our second suggestion is that the district conducts a student-led media campaign to spread awareness on the negative impact of bullying in schools and with the goal of promoting strategies for response and bullying prevention. This recommendation particularly came heavily from middle school students who expressed the need for parents, families, and peers to have access to information about bullying. And by utilizing the district's digital platforms, including its websites and social media pages, we believe that we can reach a wider audience in the larger Dearborn community to encourage collective action and foster a culture of empathy, respect, and inclusion. So students and families have shared that they would, again, they would like to appreciate more accessible information when it comes to responding and preventing bullying, particularly cyberbullying, which we received a lot of feedback about as it was a very large issue in this school district. And this media campaign can help spread information about cyberbullying and support families in supporting their students' online safety. And just to reiterate one last time, this would be led by students who would create the content and then have it posted to district websites and social media sites.
Our third recommendation, I keep forgetting I can lower this. Our third recommendation was looking at the board policy. Under Board Policy 5517.01, right now, there are current school responsibilities, so this lists out a handful of responsibilities that the building principals responsible for implementing. I won't read them all, but they are as they stand at the top, and the committee is recommending the removal of C, which teaches the district response to bullying behavior curriculum. That's a pretty outdated curriculum, and so we're recommending removing that for consistency and transparency. And then the committee has also put forth a recommendation to change the verbiage in that first bullet point from anti-bullying events to bully-prevention events and initiatives. Administrators on our committee shared that bully-prevention, the bully-prevention phrase is more in line with some of the initiatives that they participate in and has more of a positive framing. The next point on here that the committee is recommending isn't changing the policy, but is attached to this. We're recommending developing a resource for administrators to be used as a tool to track their progress when it comes to these school responsibilities, and also as a list of different ideas and suggestions that we can curate and get input from them on so that administrators are aware of some of the other great things that are happening, and if they're things that could work for their school, they can adopt and adapt them as necessary.
Okay. And the last thing that we're going to talk about is professional development opportunities. And so we're thinking about developing or starting a catalog with Zaidam and others to share with principals, and this way that it's going to be a working document, and it'll come out in the fall of every year and broken down into the categories that I'm going to explain to you so they can see which ones fit with their buildings. The three different things that we're suggesting that we, when we talked about, came up that are happening in other buildings are restorative practices. We want to focus on restorative practices because it's through this open dialogue that you can share empathy and a mutual understanding, as well as conflict resolution techniques. Conflict resolution techniques are about teaching students to be able to have these active listening skills and respectful dialogues to resolve that conflict, which goes with the restorative practices. And the last one is cultural awareness, and the idea is to train staff to inclusion practices for cultural humility, and also a positive culture in the classroom and building for sustainability, or for sustaining it.
Okay, those were our four recommendations. So a part of our next steps are continuing to gather feedback from administrators about the implementation phase and ways that we can implement this and ways that make sense in our schools. And once we do that, we're hoping to put together an implementation plan that we can share with you all, and we want to get going in the fall of 2025, so.
Trustee Petrichov.
Okay, I'm going to read you guys something because you talk a lot about cultural awareness. But people have an interpretation of culture potentially that's specific to them identifying with their family or a country. This is what I would like to see changed with your verbiage usage. School culture is a collection of values, beliefs, norms, traditions that shape the way a school operates and influences the behavior of its members. This includes the shared expectations and attitudes of teachers, administrators, students, and parents, as well as the rituals and practices that define the school's identity. Everywhere you have that word "culture," I want to see "school" in front of it because that's what we're trying to encourage, is the school culture's identity, not necessarily people who might reference it in their own specific definition. We're trying to shape a definition across the district-wide community, and we want everybody involved in the school's culture, not just their own personal understanding of culture. So I would like to see "school" put in front of every culture verbiage that's used in any of your reporting out. And I'd also suggest that if we can, have a workshop for principals at the beginning of the year that helps them understand how to build a school culture in the district, and that may potentially be an opportunity for experts to help explore with this size of a district, a way to bring everyone together and kind of sharing the same page of what should be happening in all of the individual schools.
Sorry, just I, like, I agree with that point because Ms. Harb, she used to always say to break the cord, you have to have a conversation. So I think in understanding the culture of what your school is and then coming up with that school culture, but understanding everyone's background, I think is a powerful message because too often we have people are going through the school, and they know what the school values are and things like that, but they don't know what their actual culture of their school building is made up with all the different individuals going from the staff to the students to the support that make up everything that allows a building to run. So I agree with you on that.
Right, and people, when they hear the word "culture," they have their own understanding of it, and generally speaking, it's not one of the school's identity. This is what we want to tie this into. So you want to make sure it's very clear to everyone what we're talking about when we talk about cultural awareness. It's the school's cultural, not the awareness that your neighbor is from some place or their family is doing some tradition. You want what is the school's traditions.
Trustee Barry.
Trustee Petrichov, I completely agree with you that we need to concentrate on school culture, but at the same time, if I remember right, correct me, that we actually, there was a big group that had a discussion on this, that cultural awareness, culture means many things, but cultural awareness that if, let's say, you got four or five kids looking at another student, so I shouldn't say kids, students, four or five students looking at a student, maybe looks different or acts different, whatever, and they don't, they just don't understand what that person's going through. So that needs to be.
But that is, because that's why I read the definition. It's, it's, what we're talking about is the shared expectations and attitudes and the rituals and practices in the building. So all of this is a school's presenting what their expectations are from the students, from the parents, from the, and that would incorporate. I mean, that's just one, but just using the word "culture," everybody has their own interpretation of what culture means to them, and that way, they don't necessarily buy into, well, I understand that because they're defining it differently. We want to make sure it's tied into a value system for behavior in the school.
I heard you say, wherever there's the word "culture," put "school" in front of it. So creating a school culture of understanding, I agree with you. Later on, it's when it says, you know, Cultural Awareness Day may take place during designated months, that's referring to something completely different.
What is it referring to, then?
Exact culture. I mean, there's different cultures within our school.
Your interpretation of what culture is, that's why I'm saying we have.
Well, it's not mine, many people's, too.
What does culture mean to you?
Culture, I mean, it could mean that, hey, we need to understand each other. I got to know Irene a few years ago. The more we communicate, the more we talk, the more respect I have for some of her.
But that's not what we're looking for. What we're looking for is to embed in the school building a shared vision and values and concept of school-related.
You asked me a question. You're guilty again. So if I didn't understand Irene, understand what she was all about, I might say something and might offend her without even knowing that I offended her. So I need to understand it.
Yeah, that will, that will come about in how they develop whatever they do in the building.
Exactly, that's the point I'm trying to get at.
That's not going to be taken away by saying a school culture, that's part of the concept.
I do. Trustee Al-Jahmi.
So great job on the committee, sorry, great job by the committee. That's a really good step to get started. The question that I have for the committee, for the young ladies up here, is, were you able to identify the type of bullying that's prevalent or common? And so that's one question. The other question is, you know, when we talk about bullying, there's two types of bullying. There's in-school bullying, there's social media bullying after school, and how do you incorporate that into the parents? How is the parents, how do the parents fit into this? Because you have to educate the parents as well, what is going on, they might not understand is wrong. So were you able to identify some of the common bullying?
So I can, I was at one of the tables when we discussed this, and it was, I believe, I was at a table with a principal and a vice principal, and I had asked the same thing. And what we're seeing, it's not necessarily just the physical interactions, but it's the tiny cuts. And usually it's resulted, and they said on Monday is usually when they are just, so they're extremely busy because it's, the weekend has happened. And all of the conversations that have happened on social media and through the phone has now come to fruition in the school building. So a lot of it is mediation and just, just trying to address those issues. And on Monday, when you're a principal or vice principal, those are all of the conflict resolutions that you're dealing with. So it is both, it's an "and." It's the physical result that has happened from these microaggressions on social media and on the phone.
Yeah, and I just want to add to the fact, the culture part of it, to what Trustee Barry and Trustee Petrichov say. Culture is, you know, teaching our kids in school to be respectful. It's a culture of, because we could look at culture, you know, I come from this country, and our culture is this and that, and, but there's a common layer. So both were right. You have to understand each other to respect each other's culture, but respect should be common across. But you were going to say something.
I was going to comment to the parent question. So a lot of, well, all of our buildings do parent meetings, and I know that a lot of them have actually been focusing on online safety. So I've done a few workshops with elementary schools where we've talked with parents about, like, digital footprint and online safety, and they've been great. The media campaign recommendation for the committee is really focused on how can we get information out to parents, especially parents who maybe can't come to those meetings. So they'll be a big audience. Parents and families will be a big audience for us when it comes to that media campaign where we can hopefully disseminate information to them about, you know, what's happening online, how can we protect our students, and how can we practice more online safety.
Perfect.
Question, as far as the recommendations, are there anywhere in the recommendations where we're asking schools to implement ways of changing their current status of bullying prevention? So you mentioned restorative practices, conflict resolutions. Are we consistent across all of the schools, or we're leaving that to the building administration to determine which is the optimal solution for bullying incidents? And how are we learning or sharing that among schools of, we have a bullying problem in our schools, we have too many incidents? How do we reach out to other schools to learn from what they do to prevent those kind of incidents?
So I'll, I want to clarify, a lot of the training that we outlined in the professional development recommendation is already happening across the district. One thing that really came up with the committee was that we want more of it and we want it to be more accessible. So these were the three topics, and committee, correct me if I'm misspeaking, but these were the three, like, most important topics. And so the idea with this recommendation is that now we'll have a catalog that we can share with principals and do some of that work for them, right? Like, here are upcoming professional development opportunities about restorative practice, about conflict resolution, about cultural awareness. So then, then they're able to identify, okay, it would be great for my school responsibility technician to get a refresher on this, or, so they're able to identify, like, who they have in the building and what might work best for them. But a lot of them are already going through these types of trainings and professional developments, but it was a big topic in the committee that we want more of it, and we want more access to it. And you have to remind me of the second part of the question, I forgot.
Are we sharing technique?
Oh, I, I, so one, one part of the second recommendation, I believe, was that tracking document. The hope there is that it's a space where people are able to share the things that are working well. We've also had these conversations in general admin meetings a lot where we talk about different strategies when it comes to responding to not only bullying, but just building a positive culture in the school. What are some things that we can, you know, share with each other about what's working well? So that, I know, is a space where those conversations are happening pretty frequently.
Trustee Watts and Trustee Barry.
For those new trustees on the board, so this came about last year during the policy meeting when we were looking at the bullying policy. And Trustee Barry, you were on that committee, Trustee, those of you were as well. And I think we came to, or maybe I came to the realization that the bullying policy was all about the bullying and not about the victim. And I think it was a philosophical shift of saying, like, well, if we, why is the onus, why is the responsibility in the sleepless nights on the victim's parents? And where is the responsibility for the bully or the bully's parents? And it's not a, you know, what is, you know, why is this child doing this, but is what has happened to this child that they are then the bully? And the other thing is, as teachers, as former teachers, you know which five students those are. And regardless of what happens, you can continue to ask those victims to, do you want them to change schools? They will just find a new victim. And so it is not the rotating door of, you know, you're coming in one, or they're going and leaving the district because those solutions have not happened because the bully is there and there's now a victim. So I think it's not necessarily a policy, it's not necessarily a couple of recommendations. The problem is several, it's multi-tiered. The solution is going to have to be ongoing, so it's not just this is done and we're going to move on. It always has to be what is working, what is not working. If this child has 25 suspensions, why is this child still in the school terrorizing? We have other alternative schools. And so I've spoken with some of our state officials because state law still is very, it's almost like an overcorrection on this as well. So even our state officials know this. So it's an ongoing discussion, so that's number one. Number two is that when you were talking about the school culture, this should be something that we saw with Henry Ford this more, or this evening when they did the kindness pledge. That is school culture, right? They knew that pledge. Those expectations, it's not the beginning of school year, it's the end, but I guarantee you, those expectations are embedded every single day in that building. That principals establish those cultures, the teachers probably follow with those cultures, and if not, they probably find other places to go because the expectation is, as a teacher, that not only are these, you'll have a high-level expectation for your students, and they'll make mistakes. You're there to support them, but you're not going to allow them to continue to have such behaviors without consequences. And some of those consequences, regardless, it does not matter who your mom or dad are, right? Because the teacher should know if they're, this child's out of, if they are having a rough day, that the principal has their back, and the principal needs to know that we have their back, also with the understanding of this is still a child and what has happened to this child. So I don't want to say it's one versus another, it's an "and." So it has to be a continued conversation of what is happening and what else can we be doing, and, and it's not just us and the parents and the teachers, it has to be everybody who says this has to change because our society and our middle schoolers are asking us for social media, like, what is happening? And we're the adults.
Trustee Barry and then Trustee Petrichov.
Well, okay, yeah, well, and that's what I meant by school culture, because there should be an expectation across the district. The parents, the teachers, the administrators should all be supporting each other to support those students so that everybody is aware of what we expect when you walk through those doors and that we will support you in obtaining that direction and that we will back you. You know, we hear a lot about restorative practices and, and over the years, you know, you always have, people say, I don't want to sit in a room with that person who just, you know, did me wrong. That's not comfortable for me, that's not what I want. We thought it would, at the time, give a cultural awareness approach of them getting empathetic with each other, but if people aren't in a place to hear it, either the person who's the perpetrator or the person who's being abused, if they're not in that space to hear it, they might say, I'll get along because that's all you're offering me at the moment, but we have to do more. We continue to do the same thing over and over and over again for years, and we're not getting the best results. And we just get more compounded with problems, and we're finding a way to explain it away. And like Trustee Watts said, people are just going to leave. They're going to, they're going to be to the point where they're going to say, look, you know, this is not working and nobody's doing, it gives the appearance that nobody's doing anything. So everybody has to be on the same page, and that's the parents, just as much as the teachers need to know that we're going to back you. And that's one of the things that I think we haven't always necessarily communicated well, that will support what is necessary in order, I mean, the board itself right now is the buck-stops-here kind of case where we end up with a student in front of us at an expulsion hearing, basically. We don't want it to get to that point, but we have to have everybody working and rowing those oars in the same direction. That's why I would like to see a workshop done with administrators so that they understand they're all sharing what those expectations should be across every building.
Thank you. Trustee Barry.
Thank you. You know, I wanted to go last, I wanted to comment on the committee. It was a great committee, made up of staff, students, there's some business people, administrators. I personally learned a lot, sent it to different tables, but like I, like what I heard, Trustee Petrichov say, and Trustee Watts say, I can say that the number-one thing I heard is that teachers want to be seen, they want to be heard, they want to feel supported. We've been guilty for a while. Things have changed the last few years, but we've been guilty of that. We were guilty for a long time, but we need to support our teachers, you know, when, when, they're in the classroom, like you said, you know those five or six students, and when you go to your administrator and it's because somebody's mom or dad is connected to somebody and you look the other way, that's not preventing bullying, that's, that's encouraging bullying.
Enabling.
It is enabling, thank you, perfect word. So, and I've shared this with Dr. Maleko, Ms. Sarini. This is the very first committee I've worked on where the solicitor didn't steer the committee in a certain way. You listened, you took a lot of notes, you came back, and I, I felt like you were listening to everybody in the room. I don't know how you did that, but you did an amazing job, so thank you, everybody.
Thank you, and thank you to all the committee members who volunteered their time to put in this great work. And now the policy committee will take those recommendations and implement them at the board level, and then the building administrators will take those recommendations as well. So thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Next item, please.
Next item is citizen participation. Do we have any cards? Okay, do you want me to read this since we don't have any cards?
No, but that's interesting that we don't have any cards.
I thought you were going to make me read it anyways.
All right, after that, we have action items. Special consideration of action items, are there any agenda items on the agenda which board members or the superintendent wish to discuss and vote on separately? If there are, we will exclude these from the motion below. And so I am calling for a single motion to approve all of the action items on this agenda, with the exception of any items which will be excluded from this motion by board member request.
Any, trustee would like any item to be excluded from the single motion? There are none. I do have questions on 10 and 16, but they don't need to be pulled. So can we have?
Show move.
And a support? Thank you, Trustee Barry, a support, please.
Support.
Thank you, Trustee Petrichov. Questions? I do have a question on 10, and this is the purchase for Chromebooks and laptops. And was it two meetings ago where we talked about screen use and Chromebooks in the classroom? I just have a question as far as the Chromebooks life versus the computer that we have. Do we have kind of any data as far as how long usually a Chromebook would last compared to a laptop or a desktop?
Great question, and there's been some recent changes with the lifespan of different devices. Thank you.
Thank you. Great question, there's been some changes with the lifespan of different devices. So recently Chrome has extended the support cycle for Chromebooks, which will now last from the 2020 models up through now about 10 years. So we would expect a 10-year lifespan for each of the Chromebooks. Other devices are usually about five to seven years like that. So as we look at the Chromebooks, a lot of the shipment that we got during the pandemic era would be at end of support in 2029, based on when they were purchased and supported like that. So part of the reason that we do purchase them, as we do with title funding like that, is because we had purchases pre-pandemic and the support time of those are kind of nearing an end as well, too. We expect about 5,000 of those to be at end of support by fall 2026.
Okay, but as far as the use of a single Chromebook, would that last longer, shorter than a regular laptop? I would think that the Chromebooks life expectancy is very smaller than the laptops. Laptops would do you more time.
So there's, there's a difference with the Chromebooks and the laptops in terms of cost and everything. Basically with a Chromebook, you can afford two Chromebooks to the cost of one laptop like that. So in terms of cost efficiency, that's why we kind of look at that. In terms of lifespan, you may have to update a device at least one to two times during the lifespan as well, too. So going, like we did this past year, from Windows 10 to Windows 11. And some devices might not be able to be updated after a certain point. So Chromebooks, we have that 10-year gap that we, or window that we have in there.
Okay.
Trustee Petlicov.
I have a question for Mr. Wall about the funding from this, from Title I. We already got the money in the bank, right?
Correct, it's on a reimbursement basis.
There's no way they're going to be able to come back with a bill and say, give it back?
Correct, not for this year. Future funding is subject to potentiality, but not currently.
And tariffs could potentially impact the costs down the road as well. So if we're gonna do it, we better spend it now while we have it.
Correct, it's on a reimbursement basis. Once we order it and receive it, then we can ask for reimbursement. We can't ask for it in advance.
Okay, okay, so we really don't have the money in the bank then if we're asking for reimbursement?
For this current year, correct. That's the federal process we do.
That's what I wanted to know because I don't, I don't want to find out, you know, when we go to hand the bill in, that they say, oopsie.
Just superintendent, Dr. Malakal?
Yeah, we just say too, like with the HRA that we talked about, that, we had never seen that before, where, like they just said, but they'll, you'll get notice where they cut us off immediately. You saw some of the funding to it, S or another dollar. So we haven't seen this kind of thing happen before, so.
So we don't really know what could be coming.
The Title I.
How, do they have this ready to happen?
The Title I is approved from what I was told through the Congress and Slotkin was in a meeting with us. We're okay up until September of this year. If anything happens to Title I, it would happen in October, is what we're being told.
And they would be next fiscal year grant.
Right. My fear is that everybody's gonna be ordering, so let's, let's get that order in now because availability might also be strained.
Yeah, the standard process, even though it's for this year grant that started October 1st, our Title I budget just got approved last week. So it's a logistics process that we go through quite extensively. And this time of year is usually when it gets approved, hence why you see that in the board meeting immediately afterwards.
Right, and I hopefully they'll have that number ready to go.
Thank you. My other question was on 16, was it? Did I say 16? Yeah. So this one, I know, it says due to the lead time for the parts and urgent need for these repairs, we utilize the Omni contract. Can you please explain what that means for the general public to know?
Yeah, I'd be happy to.
Could we have more quotes from other companies just to compare prices?
So using Omni, because as was mentioned, while we kind of discussed earlier, we're not in great detail. The heat on Stout's pool stopped working at some point during the heating season. HVAC mechanics were aware of it. And they, we weren't able to have the funding to have the time to have an architect design this, which you're referring to as what would be a normal bid, to where you can get more proposals. So due to the urgency and becoming at the last minute available funds to a grant that we received, we went with the design-build option. That's where Trent designs it, and they also provide us a quote to perform the work.
So we were not able to get it?
Right, so we utilized the Omni contract. This is used in this case often, just to save the time. Because if we were to have an architect design it and then bid it out, we wouldn't have a chance to get this work done this summer.
Okay, thank you.
Just one more note on that. The Omni bid pricing, they go through a bidding process themselves and they bid unit prices. And it's what we call a consortium bid, so it's already been through the bidding process, not specifically by us, but by the Omni company.
Great, thank you. Any other questions? There are no questions, can we have a roll call, please, on the motion?
Sure, trustee Al-Jahmi.
Yes.
Trustee DeBrozio.
Yes.
Trustee Zar, yes. Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Trustee Petlicov.
Yes.
Vice President Watts.
Yes.
President Moser.
Yes.
Call yourself?
I'm sorry?
Did you call for yourself? Yeah, you did.
Oh, yeah, I did.
He did.
Next item, please. Or do we have a summary of the agenda items?
Keep going. Okay, the summary of the agenda action items were, number one, approval of warrants. Number two, approval of an award to Uliens. Number three, approval of change orders. Number four, number four, approval of an award to Southwest Food Service Excellence per Board Report 24-116. Number five, approval of an award to Michigan Initiative for Cybersecurity Education LLC. Number six, approval of an award to Nutty Scientists and Hype Athletics. Number seven, approval of an award to Curriculum Associates per Board Report 24-117. Number eight, approval of an award to Just Write Readers per Board Report 24-118. Number nine, approval of an award to Keys to Literacy per Board Report 24-119. Number 10, approval of an award to People Driven Data Image Systems, INACOMP, Apple, and CDW per Board Report 24-120. Number 11, approval of change orders per Board Report 24-121. Number 12, approval of an award to GD Top Notch Cleaning Service Incorporated and Absolute Fire Protection per Board Report 24-122. Number 13, approval of an award to Allied Construction Services per Board Report 24-123. Number 14, approval of an award to HMC Mason Contractors, Spence Brothers, EIDs Consulting LLC, Concrete Floor Treatments Incorporated, Absolute Fire Protection, WM Floyd Company, and Allied Building Service Company per Board Report 24-124. Number 15, approval of an award to Michigan Recreational Construction. Number 16, approval of an award to Trance per Board Report 24-125. Number 17 through 20, approval of non-instructional and instructional personnel items for P through 12. Number 21, approval of financial statement. Number 22, approval of policy updates, changes per Board Report 24-131. And number 23, approval of donations.
Thank you.